Thank you Lord for the day you've given and the evening we have tonight. Thank you for this occasion that we can assemble and do the business of this city. We ask your hand be upon this council and have everything they do, what your will be done. And we thank you for all the community that is in all that we will have.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening everyone. This time we will please have roll call.
Mayor Gary Moore.
Present.
City Attorney Darren Rice.
Here.
Alderman Terry Stahl.
Here.
Alderman Alan Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Cheryl Eccleberry.
Here.
Alderman Eugene McGill.
Present.
Alderman Bruce McKibben.
Here.
Alderman Clifford Reiver.
Here.
Alderman Dewey Eccleberry.
Here.
Alderman Cody Atterberry.
Here.
And shows everybody in attendance, we can go ahead and continue on. Uh, next would be the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. They were included in your alderman packet. Are there any changes to any of the minutes from the last meeting? If there are none, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Any abstain? Minutes are approved. Next would be the approval of the bills that were submitted since our last alderman meeting. Uh, again, the aldermen have a chance to take a look at the bills. Are there any questions on any of the bills that were submitted for paying? If there are none, is there a motion to approve the bills?
I make that motion seconded.
Have a motion by Alderman Dewey Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Atterberry, to approve paying the bills for this meeting. Roll call vote Dewey Eccleberry.
Yes.
Cheryl Eccleberry.
Yes.
Marsh. McGill.
Yes.
McKibben.
Yes.
Reiver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterberry.
Yes.
And the bills are approved. At this time, we will have the public comment section of the meeting. Uh, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the council, I ask that you raise your hand, they'll call you up. Please state your name, you'll have three minutes to address the council. At this time, is there anybody that would like to address the council from the audience? Seeing none, we will close the public comment section and move on to routine business. But before we get into routine business, I'd just like to take a few minutes to talk about some items that have faced the city. Uh, you know, over the weekend, uh, we had a terrible time, uh, with our water line springing leaks. Uh, you know, we've, uh, our water department was out Saturday, Sunday, uh, you know, and they've, and they've worked extremely hard. You know, it had a little bit to deal with us taking the old center tower out of the system and moving water, you know, to the west tower. Uh, and it kinda exposed some weak points in the water system. Uh, about twenty-four, twenty-five of them right now to be exact. Uh, you know, when talking with Connor, Connor, you know, our engineers, you know, those leaks were going to show themselves eventually at some point in time. But when we changed the flow of the water and the pressure, a little bit of the pressure, those leaks were exposed a little bit earlier. Uh, you know, and this hasn't been just a water department project. Uh, you know, we've had to call in, I've had the, the gas department digging in front of the water department so they could come in behind me and make the repairs. I've had to call the cemetery in to flag on Route forty-five South. Uh, you know, I've called the street and bridge in to help also excavate, you know, holes so that we could get the water back on as quickly as we could. Um, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, you know, that it happened, but you know, again, I'll kinda say maybe it's gonna be like the growth project. When, when we get over, when we weather the storm and get out of the way, uh, it'll all be for the better. Uh, again, I ask our residents just to bear with us. We know there's some inconvenience of having low water pressure or maybe at times having no water pressure. But, uh, you know, the guys, the city workers are working extremely hard to give your prepared day as quickly as they can. And with that, we will go ahead and move into routine business. Uh, the first item, uh, is an ordinance approving the appropriations of fiscal year May first, twenty twenty-three through April thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Again, we held a public, had a public meeting. Uh, aldermen, you've had it in your packets. Uh, if we're just gonna look at the, again, the last page, we've had a few more people come in since the meeting. Uh, we'll talk about the, uh, appropriation of numbers. Uh, total revenues anticipated for the city are twenty-two million eight hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars. Uh, total expenditures, uh, are at twenty-six million seven hundred and eighty-eight six twenty-five. That will leave a shortfall of three million nine hundred and seventeen one seventy-six. Again, uh, please understand appropriations are exactly that. You know, I've met with the department heads, I've asked for their capital projects, and, and there are projects, uh, within the appropriations. You know, our water tower is not completely paid for. We have seven hundred thousand dollars of electrical meters that are coming forth. Uh, and, and then the departments have put in, you know, some capitalized projects. Those capitalized projects are included in the, uh, twenty-six million. But that will take council approval, you know, to approve the large, large ones. Uh, you know, in, in the appropriations is broke, broken down by the department. Uh, you know, I met with the finance committee, we kinda went over it a little bit, discussed it, removed a few things, left a few things in there. Cody, you're kinda the chairman of the finance committee, have you got anything to add?
I think overall, there's some projects that I think may or may not get done this year. Just some things that they went ahead and put in the budget in case we could get to them, but stuff that we'll have to vote on at meetings, but overall, nothing too crazy was asked for in terms of.
And hopefully, as it's, the year works itself out, you know, we don't recognize that three point nine million dollar deficit, you know, it comes, it comes a little closer. Are there any questions on the appropriations from any of the council? If none, are, is there a motion to approve the appropriations?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Have a motion by Alderman Stahl, seconded by Alderman McKibben, to approve the appropriations for fiscal, fiscal year May one, twenty twenty-three through April thirty, twenty twenty-four. Roll call vote Cheryl Eccleberry.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
McKibben.
Yes.
Reiver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterberry.
Yes.
Dewey Eccleberry.
Yes.
And the appropriation is approved. Item number two on the agenda would be the acknowledgement, and this is just an acknowledgement for the city, for the mayor and the city council, uh, an acknowledgement of the Kemper CPA planning letters. Uh, in your package, there were two letters from Kemper that were, uh, in your packet for your, for your review. Uh, Kemper was here, uh, last week or the week before to complete the, the twenty-three audit. And so they will be putting that results together and then come back to the council and present, uh, their findings. But here, we just need to acknowledge, uh, and again, it's a no vote, that we just need to acknowledge that, uh, you and, and the city has received the two letters that they provided us. Any questions on any of that? If not, we'll move on to item number three. Uh, that is a request for a street closing for a portion of Leroy Street from July the fifth through the ninth. Uh, they are going to have a tennis tournament out there that weekend, and they are just asking to close that section of road that goes between the two tennis courts. Uh, you know, that way you don't have to worry about walking from tennis court to tennis court. Uh, and, you know, we will block the roads off. Is there any discussion for the street closing? Is there a motion to approve the street closing?
I, I make that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Anyone wish to abstain? The request is approved. Uh, item number four, again, is not, uh, a vote, it's just a recommendation or approval from the city council. Uh, RJ Marketing, uh, has their contract with the city. It comes, uh, up, uh, to be renewed, uh, in, in April, uh, or June, I'm sorry. Last time, you know, we just asked if there was no objections from the council, would that mean to go ahead and renew, uh, the contract with RJ Marketing? Uh, that contract is for fourteen thousand four hundred dollars for the year, and there are some additional items that may be applicable if needed to be. Questions from the council? You know, Claire does a great job with, uh, with the Facebook, with the live streaming, uh, updating the city webpage, uh, you know, and she's, she's got some good ideas, uh, you know, coming forth not, you know, for, for the city council. Uh, she works well with Libby and Doug in the Chamber of Commerce, uh, you know, Claire's businesses and assets to us. So, if there are no objections, we will go ahead and just renew that contract for another year. Any objections? Uh, item number five was the purchase of a police vehicle, but I was told at the beginning of the meeting that we are going to remove that item as the car dealership is no longer allowing any requests to be put into the purchase. But the next, Keith, help me out here.
Uh, as advisor, I'm going to bring the fleet vehicle back to twenty twenty-five, and the first time we might be able to order is January twenty twenty-four.
So, since we can't get one, well, there's no sense in, you know, approving, uh, you know, the go-ahead, you know, and the, and the thought behind that was, you know, the last time it took about twelve to sixteen months to get the, the police vehicle in, uh, but, you know, when, when they had tell us that they're accepting orders, we'll bring that back to the council and go from there. We'll scratch that. Item number six, uh, is a discussion on our power plant property. Uh, previously, we put that up for bid twice. Uh, thought we had, thought we had it sold both times, but it, it kinda fell through. Uh, we have had two people that has somewhat showed some interest in bidding on it. Uh, so I'm going to ask the council that hopefully the third time will be the charm and that we put this property up for bid. You know, we've always put a minimum bid on it. Uh, we had a minimum bid on it the last time, but the minimum bid wasn't reached, so, you know, I'm, I'm gonna ask the council, we just put it out for bid, uh, but we have the ability to accept or reject any of all this discussion on that. Everybody's fine with go ahead and advertising, a motion to approve the bidding of the power plant for sale, again?
I make that motion. I'll second it.
Have a motion by Alderman Dewey Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Reiver, to approve seeking bids for the sale of the power plant property. Roll call vote McKibben.
Yes.
Reiver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterberry.
Yes.
Dewey Eccleberry.
Yes.
Cheryl Eccleberry.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Have a moment to ask to get the proper paperwork going up and, and notifications out, where, that we wanna say when, once you kinda, when we need it back?
Um, I, just, I'll just. Um, we'll have. Yeah, I'll go ahead and get it in the district, and we'll have to run it for about a month. So, it's probably, sometime next month, we'll probably have to. Like, depending on how full the money would be for the profit, that's probably for this.
Okay, very good. Uh, item number seven is, again, is just an information. It's just an informational, uh, again, uh, Wayne White, as I mentioned earlier, part of the appropriation is, is the ability to get A and I meters for electric customers, which will give the ability for your electric meter to be read from the office, you know, eliminating the need for the meter readers, uh, to go out and physically read each and every customer's electrical meter. Our, you know, our meter readers will still go out and get the natural gas reading, and will still get the water reading. Uh, Wayne, this has been a long project, it's been about two years in, in the, in to get the order, even where they say they're gonna ship. But Wayne White has got a July ship date, uh, for the electrical meters. Once they get the electrical meters in, they will start developing, uh, a plan to install those meters. Uh, in talking with Chris Hopfinger at Wayne White Electric, um, they're gonna develop a route, uh, try to get the whole route done, that way when the electrical meters are installed, the meter readers won't have to do that. Now, what does that mean for the residents? Uh, you know, Wayne White will go up and attempt to knock on your door and tell you that they're going to change your meter, but if you're not home, it's their intention, they'll pull your old meter out and put your new meter in. When you get home, your clocks will be blinking, but your power should be on. So, if you see somebody messing around your electrical box, and again, once we get the meters in, you know, we will come forward and we will try to, uh, let the people know what areas they're gonna be working in. Again, this is a, a project that's, you know, will save the, the city some, some money. And so, but just be aware that when they get the meters in, we'll communicate, you know, what areas they're gonna work in, and they'll be switching out the electrical meters. Any questions from the council on, on that, on the electric meters switch out? Uh, the last item on the agenda is Sunrise Sanitation Bulk Item Pickup Change. Uh, me and Diane and myself had a meeting with Sunrise, you know, a couple of weeks ago or so, uh, and she's requested a couple of changes. Uh, the first one is the large item bulk pickup. Uh, I think it's maybe because, maybe they were having some equipment issues or something like that, but instead of the first Friday of the month, uh, for the month of July, August, and September, they're going to make it the third Friday of the month for large item pickups. So that will be Friday, July twenty-first, Friday, August eighteenth, and Friday, September the fifteenth, for the large item pickups. Questions or discussion on the change for the large item pickup? Uh, also, in the same meeting, we, we had some discussion, uh, about bulk pickups, and she, um, had some changes or some, some clarification, maybe, is maybe the best word to say, of, of what she expects on a large bulk item pickup. Uh, again, you know, it's, we've had good discussions, bad discussions on, you know, the bulk pickup and what it entails, and how big an area it is, and what she will and what she will. Uh, but she's given us a list, uh, and she says, uh, you know, allowed for the large item pickup are as follows. Uh, one large piece of furniture, an example is a regular couch, a love seat, a recliner, a mattress, a box spring, a dining room table, a dresser, or an entertainment center. Uh, she said, then the smaller items of furniture will be, need to be no larger than a four for, four by four pile. Some of these examples are kitchen chairs, office chairs, lamps, and end tables. There are two types of appliances that she will, major appliances, excuse me, she will pick up, and that would be examples, a dishwasher or a hot water heater. And this one, uh, again, uh, all boxes need to be broken down and put into your tote, for, provided for your weekly pickup. She doesn't wanna go around and pick up cardboard boxes as bulk item pickups. She requests that you pick these items, you break them down and put them in your tote. Again, the two cleanups per year, uh, a, a second tote can be rented for five dollars a month, that'll be distributed, uh, one month, the first week of the month without a delivery charge and prepaid in six months increments. Uh, if you would like a tote prior to the delivery schedule, there will be a delivery charge. Uh, non-payment for services of total will, will result in the tote being picked up and not returned until payment is paid in full. I, I guess we're having some difficulties with some of the residents who have the second tote, uh, are not paying her for those totes, so if, if she picks your tote up because of non-payment, you're gonna have to pay the bill in full to get it back. Uh, a, a delivery fee of thirty dollars will be charged for all totes that have been picked up for non-payment. All household residents weren't provided with one tote when she took over. We've had some discussions, there seem to be some totes that get misplaced, stolen, relocated. Uh, you know, maybe if you move out, you, you think you need to take your tote with you. Uh, but, so if a tote is stolen, uh, then it's up to the resident to pay for this tote, uh, and that would be at a cost of seventy dollars. You know, I've argued with her a little bit on stolen totes, you know, we just have two different opinions of, we should cover that cost. Set a lot in a short time, is there any, is there any questions or any discussions a, about the changes that she has made?
Well, actually, yes.
Okay.
I, I'm happy that she's actually pinpointed on big bulk, bulk items. We've been trying to get her to pin them down for years now. She's kind of, hmm, stayed away from what she will and won't pick up, so I'm, I'm glad to hear that, what she will and won't pick up.
Okay. Anybody else?
I guess I have a question, and I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask it, but, um, like these dates, or when we go back to the first Friday of the month? Um, it's been noticed that after, let's say, the normal first Friday of the month, the garbage is picked up, large bulk, they go by, they pick it up, that afternoon, large bulk items gets put out. Um, is there, and that's not her fault. I just, I'm, and that's not what I'm trying to see, that it's her fault, but is there any way that the residents would be, um, ate, somehow made that they cannot be put this stuff out? It's, or is that where the city would come in and pick up that were, that were being charged?
I'll answer that in two parts, I mean, 'cause that is one of the things that she discussed too. You know, a lot of times Diane will get a phone call that says, you know, my property got missed. Uh, you know, so Diane will communicate back with Christie and, you know, see if, if, if it was missed, what we can do. Uh, you know, unfortunately for us, you know, we have a lot of residents who, you know, will put it out when they're not supposed to put it out, you know, so, you know, and then we got to deal with that as the eyes for, uh, you know, in the city. Uh, if you, and, and, I don't know if you was on the council or not, but, you know, we passed an ordinance, you know, for four dollars additional. The city will come around, you know, and basically, in conversations with Robert Kemp, you know, I kinda told him I wanted him to hold off until after the first Friday, because I want her to pick up what she's agreed to pick up. And then we'll come along after that and pick up. Uh, you know, I have instructed Robert, you know, you know, we're gonna have a gap here of, you know, six, seven weeks, you know, on, on bulk item pickup, you know, so now I don't know, you know, what that's gonna look as you drive up and down the ret, you know, the roads of the city, uh, but, you know, I've instructed Robert, you know, if he sees it, to go ahead and pick it up. Uh, but, you know, you know, she felt that a lot of times, you, you know, you, you might hear the truck beeping, uh, or, or you might see it drive by and you think, oh, shoot, I forgot to put it out. So you run out there and you put it out, and then Diane gets the phone call that says, you skipped me. And, and, you know, it's, it's, has the opportunity to come and have a pleasant conversation. But if it's out there, you know, our residents, you know, we're charging them, you know, we're gonna get it, we're gonna get it picked up. Now, there are still some things out there that we don't wanna pick up, you know, tires, paint cans, computers, you know, hazardous material, uh, but, you know, we will try to work on everything else. Answer your questions, Sharon?
Yes, for the most part, but, uh, my question is, is there any way to get this across to the residents? That they need to comply with what's set in place?
It's, uh, you, you know, we tried very hard, you know, we have WFIW, who's not in attendance tonight, but, you know, Tommy hears from the press, you know, uh, you know, we've put it on our Facebook page, uh, you know, and, and I've, I fully understand and I, and I know, uh, you know, there, there, there was a, God love Facebook, uh, there was a Facebook post today, you know, that showed a picture of the tote in a cardboard box right beside the tote. And the caption stated, I guess our garbage company is too lazy to pick up the cardboard box. I, I refrain from commenting, but you, you, you know, I, time after time after time, we've talked about break the box down, put it in the tote. Uh, I, I mean, I'm open to any ways, I mean, you know, Wayne County Press reports it, WFIW airs it, uh, Diane puts it on the Facebook page, uh, it's, it's, it's difficult.
Maybe go listen to us.
We can only hope. You're welcome. Anybody else got any questions on the Sunrise sanitation changes? And if any of our residents would like a copy of the letter, we would be more than happy to give it to them. That concludes the routine businesses, uh, under the miscellaneous, I do have a couple of, of miscellaneous items that we would like to talk about. Uh, the, the first, you know, the first, July first, Saturday, is our fireworks out to Southwest Park. You know, I hope, you know, fireworks will begin at dusk. Hopefully, the weather holds off, and, you know, like, a good time could be had by everybody. There will be a band out there playing, uh, so, you know, get the opportunity, you know, hopefully, uh, enjoy the, the fireworks. Um, this afternoon, uh, the Illinois Department of Transportation was in town, and had a luncheon at Jawaloo. Uh, there was, you know, they invited merchants or, you know, basically, uh, anybody that wanted to attend to kinda give an update, uh, on the road projects, and, and they discussed, you know, our road project, uh, and, you know, the anticipated, uh, date for, for everything to be completed would be a year from this month, from June of twenty twenty-four. Uh, you know, they're, currently, they're doing, and if they're curving, uh, after the curving, you know, they're doing some ADA compliant, uh, cross sidewalks, they'll be doing some sidewalks. After all of that is done, uh, then they will get into the milling and the resurfacing. Uh, I think it's a pretty good indication today that they will probably complete the Delaware project through Southwest Seventh to Ninth Street or the bridge out here, uh, this year. And hopefully, you know, come in next year, you know, unless something happens, then maybe they can, can move forward. Uh, was a little, you know, Christie asked a question about the, um, Fall Fun Fest. You know, I have been in contact with, with Hal, who is doing the engineering. They Uh, they assured me that, uh, even if this part of the project was due, that they would go somewhere else, that they would not interfere with the road closure or the Fall Fun Fest, uh, for the, for the city. Any questions on the, on the I dot? The last thing that I have under miscellaneous, and this is just gonna be a discussion, and, and, uh, for the alderman, I passed out a, a little picture of a little automobile. Uh, and again, we have a resident who has went to Chief Callclazer and requested, uh, that this little, uh, truck be approved for our ordinance, for our ATV ordinance, to allow them to, uh, drive it, you know, on the city streets, uh, under the license of our, of our ATVs. Uh, yeah, it's, uh, I've talked with Chief Callclazer and Assistant Chief Lewis. Uh, you know, they, they've got an opinion, uh, you know. This one, and I'll, and I'll use this term loosely, is not permitted by the state of Illinois to be on the highways. Uh, you know, whether it's a emissions issue, uh, whether it's a VIN number issue or the title. But we've been asked to see, and, and this is again, just an open discussion, uh, if there is interest into allowing, um, residents or non-residents to bring this type of vehicle, uh, to the city police department to be licensed, to be driven, you know, on the side streets where the current golf carts or the ATVs can be. Chief Callclazer, you got any input or thoughts, or did I miss anything?
As the ordinance written right now, it's off-highway vehicles, so primarily used is off-highway. To us, that doesn't fit the bill at this point. So it'd be open the ordinance up to change definitions, whatever, if you guys wanna consider.
Do you see any safety issues over this, over anything else?
It's, it's cab, it's got seatbelts, it's got airbags, I don't think it has airbags, I'm not sure. Um, the only one that I know have registered one is Karma, and they no longer register. I think that the definition as written, being non-highway, they would be researched by the attorney to see if that fits in what is allowed by municipalities to authorize.
Uh, well, yeah, I'd have to look into it. I've looked at this issue here, with these, uh, miniature trucks. I'm not, I'd have to see, you know, what the status is, but I think you even hit on it. Like, you know, they don't have a VIN number, there's some emissions problems. Uh, or at least, I don't know where that falls in the, um, with the Secretary of State. Uh, they're gonna do something, you know, uh, I can, I can get a, a answer on it. I, cause I'm not real sure if the, you know, we're, we're able to do the ATV ordinance, uh, based upon enabling legislation from, um, the municipal, or from the legislature. I'm not sure if miniature trucks would be. I know like ATVs, four-wheelers, things like that, side-by-sides, they are, I'm not sure. Miniature trucks, I'd have to look. And I, I maybe should check with Karma, I guess, if I don't know.
No?
We can't run four-wheelers?
No.
Cause there's what, T-handles?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and like Attorney Guy said, I mean, Illinois compiled statute, I mean, does mention, you know, you know, ATV side-by-sides, you know, giving the municipalities the ability to write, you know, so. So maybe, you, you know, I, I told the resident, you know, I, I would bring it up for discussion. Uh, you know, so maybe at this point in time, uh, you know, we defer to attorney advice to get, you know, a legal opinion on whether we can even open the ordinance up to the licensing of a miniature truck in lieu of a litter. Is that agreeable with everybody? And if you can bring it back?
Hold on. Okay. Now, there are many, many vans too, in this situation too. Right? Have you?
Nobody's asked, this is the first. We've actually had one request like this before, and we said it was non-censored. It's designed to drive on roadway. It didn't fit.
I guess what I'm trying to get is, I would lay more toward just the truck looked at other than this whole class of vehicles, of vans and all that too. Cause there are vans this style. So I would like to eliminate that part of that.
I'm not for sure that, that it shouldn't be our, our vision. You, you're either in or you're out. I mean, what's, I mean, what's the difference? And I'm not seeing any, but what's, what's the difference? Well, I don't know if we want. You, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I mean, i- if, if, if it's in this class, you know, either we're gonna say we're, we're, you know, we think that we can permit this class, or we're gonna say, no, we can't permit this class.
Yeah, I understand.
And, you know, I, I, I don't think we need to try to split hairs or, or muddy any waters that doesn't, you know, that we don't need to muddy.
Okay.
We got enough muddy waters in town right now. So I mean, is that, is that okay? Just give us a, you know, and we'll say, yes, we will for the class, or no, we won't for the class.
Is this any different, or how would this be different than the golf cart being allowed?
Well, they have, the, the legislature specifically, uh, set out like golf carts and those type of off-road vehicles. They're, um, said, well, you can't, if, if the municipality passes an ordinance allowing it, they're able to do so. But that, that's the difference. The thing is, they just don't talk about many trucks or, or these type of things. And limited research I did, again, this is about five years ago, uh, which time is prohibited from doing that. Uh, I think laws change, and I just wanna make sure I gave the right answer before I, you know.
Uh, the last thing that I have, uh, uh, for me, and then I'll turn it over to you guys, is, is we've had some residents, uh, again, that have, you know, not been happy about the water situation with the water leaks. And, and I've been challenged, you know, of how we communicate. Uh, you know, and this is one of the projects that, you know, that Claire has worked on of how can we communicate, you know, to our residents that, hey, we've got a water leak on Center Street, and if you're in this block, you know, you might not have any water. You know, Diane and Claire do an outstanding job in posting on Facebook. Uh, but, you know, the customer kind of told me, well, I don't have Facebook. You know, and he, you know, wanted, you know, why we didn't come door-to-door to knock and tell them, you know, we didn't have water, or it's gonna be out this long. You know, I tried to explain, you know, that our, that our employees will try to get you back in water as fast as we can, uh, and, you know, I apologized. But in talking with Keith, uh, you know, the city, uh, and it's been talked about a long time ago. I don't know how many people in the audience just, uh, signed up for the, uh, for the NICSL notifications. Uh, you can go on to your phone and you can text six-two-eight-three-seven to the number eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven. And that will get you notifications that come from Wayne County. Uh, in talking with Keith, we can push, we can push some public service announcements out there. Uh, you know, that says, um, you know, your water on Delaware is gonna be out, or we've got a water leak. Uh, you know, or we can take it to some other public service announcement. Keith has told me, uh, and then Claire's worked hard on, you know, identifying some, some different projects, you know, or different apps that will allow us to do that. And it's became, you know, the cost is, is up there a little bit. But a- again, you know, going forward, uh, if you will just, again, I'll say it again, text Fairfield zip code six-two-eight-three-seven to the, to the number of eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven. Uh, then that will enroll you in this. And if there's storm mornings, air quality is the last ones that I've been seeing coming out. Uh, you know, we will do our best to communicate to our residents that here, here's where we're at and here's what we think. Uh, again, we will do our best to, to notify you, but it, that's gonna take some, you know. Keith is, uh, you know, qualified or trained. Uh, Tom Lindland, who is the nine-one-one coordinator, uh, you know, those are the people that will put that notification out. Uh, it's not gonna come from Diane, it's not gonna come from Claire, uh, you know. So again, uh, you know, we will continue to look at things that maybe we can tailor to the city of Fairfield only. Uh, but, you know, in, in trying to get, you know, some information out there, you know, I feel that, that this is something that, you know, maybe we'll try. Questions on that? All right, I've talked long enough. How about you guys? You got anything with the miscellaneous to bring up?
I would say the city workers are doing their best with the city water leaks.
I agree one thousand percent on that.
They're doing it fast and again.
Any other, anything else? Nothing? Uh, we will not need an executive session tonight, so we will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Do they second? Sheriff?
He's second.
Tubby? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
opposed say no? Anyone to thank? Have a great evening. Thank you, everyone, for attending.